One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to our presentations tonight. Item number one is National Health Center Week. We have Susan B. Walter, who's the CEO, Mandy Blackburn, Site Manager, and Diane Markwood, who's the Site Manager of Tri-State Community Health. Please.
I'm sorry, I'm falling. I have very bad knees.
Take your time.
You don't want me to fall down?
No, we do not.
Next year, I'll be bionic, so.
There you go.
I'm Susan Walter. I'm the CEO of Tri-State Community Health Center. And as Jason introduced everybody, we're so glad to be here. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing our plea for a proclamation, and thank you all for being here. Community health centers have been around for over 50 years now. We are the largest primary care network in the country, and we serve 28 million people, 28 million Americans, in 1,100 communities. And there are 1,400 of us who are organizations. Tri-State is just one. We are all very similar in terms of what we are by law supposed to do in terms of our comprehensive quality care, but every FQ, Federally Qualified Health Center, Community Health Center, is different because every community in this country is different. We are run by a volunteer board of directors, 77 percent who are patients. So it makes us very different than most organizations. We really listen to our patients and want to make sure that we're providing the quality care that they deserve. And I want you to know that just last year, Tri-State was one of 36 of the 1,400 community health center systems in the nation to receive the great award of being a quality leader because of our outstanding, I'm humbled and proud to say, chronic care management, prevention services, and our excellent perinatal and prenatal health care. So we are providing outstanding quality care. We take care of about 19,1216 people in 2018, and we serve five sites, two here in Cumberland, one in Hancock, one in Pennsylvania in McConnellsburg, and one in Berkeley Springs. About half our patients come from here and are either taken care of at the primary care center or the Women's OBGYN Center. So every year, all the community health centers throughout the country get together with their communities to celebrate ourselves, our patients, our boards of directors, our communities, and our public officials, to celebrate that we are indeed providing quality care for everybody in the community regardless of their ability to pay. So we will see anybody who comes in our door. We do not turn anybody away. We take the same quality care of every single person, whether they have insurance or don't, and we take most insurances. So we are very active also in all of our communities because we want to make sure that we are not only meeting the needs of our patients, but meeting the needs of our communities. That's very important, and actually, by law, we have to do that. That's one of the requirements to be a community health center in this country. So we are very pleased to have the gentleman in front of us proclaim the National Health Center Week. At our sites, at our five sites, we will all be celebrating something different every day because we want to celebrate the diversity of our patients. We'll be celebrating children. We'll be celebrating public officials. We'll be celebrating our patients. We'll be celebrating the homeless, and we'll be celebrating, uh-oh, agricultural workers. I think that's what the categories are this year. We really have a lot of fun doing that and decorate the health centers and so on. So I invite everybody to come and see Tri-State, which is right next door. And I do want you to all know also that 17 years ago, this community asked Tri-State to come here. We didn't just walk in on you. You asked us to come and provide the kind of model of care that we provide, taking care of everybody. And then 15 years ago, we started the Women's Health Center at the request of Western Maryland Hospital System. So we're a community partner. We're here to work with you all and everybody out here to make this a better community, to always make it a healthy community. Mandy, do you want to say a few words? Do we have time? Just a few minutes?
Sure.
I'd love to have, because we're very proud of our site managers. They're the ones who run the show, not me. I'm just, you know, a policy person.
Please.
Hi, I'm Mandy Blackburn. I just wanted to let you know that we have four nurse practitioners at our site and two doctors currently. We're recruiting for another nurse practitioner. Wanted to share a couple of stories from today that show how we do exactly what Susan says we do. Had a patient call in with an appointment this evening. Patient had received a bill in the mail for $30. She called very upset, asked to speak to the nurse. She was crying. She couldn't afford to come in. She already had a bill. She wasn't coming. She wasn't going to take her medicine. She didn't know what she was going to do. I got on the phone with her, explained everything we can do for her, how we can help her. She told me she had just, her home was breaking. She was just in a divorce, lost her secondary insurance, and by the time the conversation was over, we were both laughing. So she knows that she's getting medication assistance. We're going to help her with that co-pay. We're going to do everything we can. She came into the office. Everything's taken care of. Then we received another phone call. This was earlier today from a young boy. His father has never been seen by our primary care physician. He's sick. He knows that he has cancer from a visit with a specialist at one point. It's been several years since he was diagnosed. Dad can't move around anymore. He's in really bad shape and had a fall yesterday. He is, the son's pretty sure he broke his hip. Couldn't get him to go to the emergency room. He had EMTs there. Dad wouldn't move. He absolutely refused. He called us. He was crying. He's like, "I have no idea what to do with my dad. I can't lose him. He won't go to the hospital." They had a daughter who passed away from something that happened at a hospital somewhere. After about half an hour, I had a provider go into their house to see them for a home visit. So Dad didn't have to come out. He didn't have to step out of his comfort zone, but we went and we took care of him, and he was convinced to go to the hospital and get himself taken care of. These are just two things that happened today that we do to help people in the community.
I think that's really important to hear the real stories. All of us have stories. Every one of us has a story of our own. It's wonderful to relay.
Hi, I'm Diane Markwood. I'm the Site Manager at the OBGYN office. We're located at the hospital. Our doctors, we have three doctors and nurse practitioner, and the specialty site is a little different than the primary care. We're a women's site, so of course, we deliver babies, and our doctors do surgery at the hospital and office procedures. And we do see patients regardless of their ability to pay. And the thing is, is we do the holistic approach for our patient care because when they come in, they're not just coming in for their appointment. We're assessing them for, like, if they need a referral to the dentist, if they're having depression, things like at the primary care site, like food, different things like that. We do a screening for depression. We have a case manager on site. That's what makes us unique compared to a primary care site. So having that availability to patients is definitely something that we are very proud of. I'm going to cut it short. I know that everybody's been speaking. We do different things during our Health Center Week. So last year, we did, our providers wore capes. They were the superheroes. We had capes for the kids and stickers and stuff like that. So we actually have our patients write up something, how it impacted them. So this young lady, she was pregnant, so she put on here, she actually won the $100 gift certificate that we had for her. She said, "Tri-State Women's Health has had an impact on me in the following ways. Providing care for me and my baby has been such a blessing. This place is almost like a second family, and everyone does such an amazing job making you feel comfortable and cared for. I've struggled with addiction in my life, and being able to open up to my doctor here without being judged is huge. My doctor has made me feel so comfortable and confident through this whole pregnancy. I'm so grateful for her and the staff here at Tri-State Women's Health." Thank you.
That's great. Great, wonderful. We do have a proclamation. Please, Ms. Walter.
(inaudible)
Absolutely.
Yes.
There you go, yeah. This is an official proclamation for National Health Center Week 2019, and it reads, "For over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative care for everyone regardless of income, insurance status, or health status. Community health centers are America's largest primary care network, and one February 5th rural residence in the United States gets health care in a community health center. Community health centers have multiple disciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Allegheny County is fortunate to have Tri-State Cumberland Primary Care Center, Tri-State Women's OBGYN Health Center. And we, the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County, do proclaim August 4th through 10th, 2019, is National Health Center Week in Allegheny County. Signed, all three County Commissioners, Creed Brody, Dave Caprere, and Jake Shade. Thank you very much."
Thank you very much. Oh, okay.
All right, moving to our public hearings. Item number two is road opening petition for Stephen and Amy Owens, Steve and Stephanie Wilkinson. We have Mr. Nick Monteleone, attorney.
Thank you, ladies.
Please.
Good to see you again, Diane. Take care. Excuse me, gentlemen. Would he have to approach to be on the record necessarily? I apologize.
Sorry, I repeat myself.
Just give your name, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. Sorry about that.
Give your name.
My name is Nick Monteleone. I'm representing Stephen C. Owens and Amy Louise Owens, who are co-petitioners together with Stephanie P. Wilkinson and Stephen P. Wilkinson with regard to the opening of a roadway, portion of Woodridge Lane, located west of Winchester Road in Crescent Town. The Owens' property abuts one side of this roadway that we seek to open for the purpose of later closing it, and the Wilkinsons have property that abuts on the opposite side of the road. There are no other adjoining landowners. And as I mentioned earlier, the Owenses and the Wilkinsons are co-petitioners, so they are in agreement. To my knowledge, there has been no opposition to this opening, and I believe that in terms of the county's investigation, you know, in terms of the access for emergency services and things of that kind, that all of that is checked out. So we would ask that the road be formally opened so that we can later go through the procedure to formally close it, and then split the property along the roadway between the adjoining property owners. I've already submitted an order, which I believe the clerk has.
Yep, okay.
If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Sure. This has been properly advertised. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comments on the road opening petition? Okay, hearing done. We can take action on this tonight, gentlemen. Is there a motion to approve the road opening petition?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, moving to our action agenda. Item number three is County Roads Bargaining Unit Contract Ratification. Mr. Rudd.
Yes, pleased to announce that we successfully negotiated a new two-year contract with the Roads Department Bargaining Unit, local number 1633, who've asked me, and the contract was ratified, I think, last week. Mr. Braun is here, another representative, and you guys certainly can approve the contract and get it signed tonight. It's a, as I say, a two-year, 2% increase, and some other things that everybody was satisfied with. I can just say it was a very satisfying, quick, prompt, and amicable negotiations, and it's a, we certainly highly recommend you approve it.
Great. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have something to sign?
Yeah, they're down here.
All right.
You may want to ask if Mr. Braun has any comments.
Mr. Braun? My name's Carol Braun. I want to thank Mr. Rudd for sitting in and completing the negotiations after Mr. Westfall left us. I've been dealing with Allegheny County for about seven years now. This was very easy negotiations. I believe we, we're both looking to fix some items and weren't looking to change anything, so it went very smoothly. Again, I appreciate the Commissioners for approving it, and I'm sure our members will be happy. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay. Item number four is Allegheny County Community Enhancement Program. This is for $412,000 for the Frostburg Center Street Redevelopment Project. Mr. David Headbid.
Commissioners, this is a good project. It's the, it comes from the Allegheny County Community Enhancement Program, which is designed to assist municipalities, sorry, in addressing their community development needs. The program uses revolving building funds as its funding source, so as such, economic development is a key element of this initiative. The purpose of the program is to provide grant funds to municipalities within Allegheny County. The Frostburg Mayor and City Council respectfully request consideration of $412,000 from this program for the Center Street Redevelopment Project. The funds would be used to reimburse the city of Frostburg for cost of acquiring and demolishing old residential rental housing stock on Center Street between Oak and American Streets, and that's directly across the street from the campus of FSU, specifically where the Brady Health Center is and Sowers Hall Dormitory. After clearing the land, it can then be developed for mixed use. That would include office and commercial space and rental housing. The city is currently working with a developer and anticipates entering into an agreement by the end of the year so the project can be completed in the summer of 2020. The city of Frostburg has already secured $670,000 in additional grant funding. At this point, staff is recommending that the Commissioners approve giving the city of Frostburg $412,000 from the Allegheny County Community Enhancement Program towards the reimbursement of acquisition and demolition costs for the Center Street Redevelopment Project.
Great. Gentlemen, this is an economic development project that Frostburg's been getting a lot of traction with. Our contribution is part of the bigger package, basically, of about 1.3 million that they're putting into this, trying to spur redevelopment there by the college. And our funds are coming out of our revolving building fund. So none of this is general fund money. All that's coming out of our Special Economic Development Fund that we get from rents on our business parks. So with that, I'll make the motion that we approve the funding this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five is State of Maryland Rural Legacy Program. This would be to acquire a 106-acre parcel in Mount Savage. We have Ms. Sierra Wigfield.
Hi, good evening, guys. So the Rural Legacy Program is funded through the Department of Natural Resources to acquire development rights of properties, so they remain, like, pristine to kind of protect the view sheds in Allegheny County. I have a willing landowner who wants to put their land up for easement. They own the mineral rights, which is rare in this area, as well as there's provisions for public access along the Great Allegheny Passage. So I'm recommending the Commissioners to sign the project agreement and the deed of easement and send it to the State Board of Public Works.
Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Thank you.
No problem, okay.
Thank you, Sierra. Okay, moving to our consent agenda. Mr. Butler.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item number six is the Fiscal 2020 to 2022 Maryland Jobs Access Reverse Commute. Commissioners, that is a grant that we are accepting in the amount of $270,000 to get people to work into the North Ranch Industrial Park. Item number seven is the Allegheny Board of Elections MOU Regarding Early Voting. Item number eight is various purchases of bleachers, team benches, and other sports equipment. Item number nine is a Business Attraction Services Contract Renewal. Item number 10 is an appointment to the Solid Waste Management Board. Item number 11 is the Mental Health Advisory Board Appointments. Item number 12 is a UPRC, Upper Potomac River Commission Board Appointment. Item number 13 is our various appointments to the Allegheny County Commissioner for Women. Item number 17, or 14, excuse me, is the Travel Request Approval for Mark Yoder to attend a conference. Item number 15 is the Declaration of Surplus Vehicles. And item number 16 is also an appropriation out of the Community Enhancement Program for the town of Lonaconee.
What's the VIN number on that vehicle?
You know, I apologize that it was not listed, gentlemen.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Rudd? I have nothing. Mr. Butler?
I believe I said enough at the last meeting. I have nothing.
Commissioner Caprere?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Commissioner Brody?
We'll just keep it running the same. Nothing tonight so far.
Silence is golden.
And on that note...
Well, I hate to break the streak, Commissioners, but...
No, sir, because we are expecting something from you.
We do, and we have this letter that will be sent to the Board of Education tomorrow, and it hopefully will be signed by all three Commissioners tonight at the public meeting, and I will read it into the record. Mr. Bennett, thank you for your work on this as well. It's to the Honorable Robert Farrell, President of Allegheny County Board of Ed. Reads, "Dear President Farrell, we'd like to express our appreciation for the Allegheny County Board of Education's recent efforts to prioritize the completion of the Fiscal 2018 Allegheny County Public Schools financial audit. While this audit is required by law, it also provides transparency and assures the public that ACPS, like all government entities, is fulfilling its fiduciary duty to taxpayers. However, the delayed filing and completion of this audit has caused significant issues for Allegheny County government. Our audit was required to be submitted to the State of Maryland by December 31, 2018, and after four extensions through April 30, 2019, the State of Maryland stopped issuing extensions, causing us to fall short of the General Assembly's statutory requirements. We also missed the March 31, 2019 deadline for submitting our single audit of federal funds to the Federal Clearing House, and we are currently on the third extension of our BOD disclosure, which was due March 31. Lastly, as a result of the delayed receipt of the ACPS audit, we missed the opportunity to be considered for what would have been our 26 consecutive GFOA Award of Financial Excellence in Financial Reporting, as that deadline was June 30, 2019. Not only has this extra cost, cost us extra staff time in our finance office, but we are now putting critical state and federal funds at risk by not complying with continuing reporting requirements. We believe that the timely completion of the upcoming Fiscal 2019 audit is critically important to our organization to best serve the residents of Allegheny County. And while some punitive and drastic ideas have been floated to try to remedy this situation, we do not want to jeopardize the financial health of Allegheny County public schools or, more importantly, to have any impact on the teachers and employees receiving their salaries by withholding any funds. However, we cannot have another situation in which we are nine months late in receiving the Allegheny County Board of Education's financial audit. Therefore, if Allegheny County government is not in receipt of the Fiscal 2019 financial audit by Friday, November 1, 2019, we will begin withholding all funds slated for capital improvement until the situation is remedied. We believe this one-month extension beyond the October 1, 2019 deadline is fair, reasonable, and necessary. And gentlemen, I know that we've been hearing about this for a long time, and I think that this official action is something we need to consider."
Absolutely. We can't jeopardize our BOD or our borrowing ability, so, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to take a motion on sending that letter?
I'll make a motion. Send that letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll just put that as item 17.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We only have one constituent sign up to speak tonight, Mr. Kenneth Wilmot.
Good evening. I'm Kenneth Wilmot, live at 513 Ford Avenue, Cumberland. I'm here to discuss, maybe, to make a suggestion for our fire departments. I watched on TV last night, someplace down in Baltimore, I think it was, car caught on fire. I mean, it burned like you've never seen before. I mean, just smoke everywhere. Fire trucks come, he couldn't put it out, because the thing is, it's made out of plastic, and plastic is oil. I spent 20 years in the Air Force, and I watched many, many demonstrations of our fire trucks using foam to put out fires. And I've seen actual inaction, putting out fires, planes crashing on takeoff, landing, all kinds of stuff. So I would like to make a suggestion that Allegheny County become foremost in putting foam trucks in our volunteer departments in our city. This is going to have to be a combination. I think we should be the first ones in Maryland to have a foam truck. You'd be surprised how fast foam puts out a fire, not only for, these cars of today are all plastic, and everything in our homes now is made from plastic. And plastic is nothing but oil. And when it starts burning, it smokes like crazy. That's what kills people, is smoke. So I would like to make a suggestion. Could we somehow start an initiative to put foam trucks in our volunteer fire departments in the city of Cumberland to enhance? It would look, make us look real good if we're the foremost in the front on this. I would say a good initiative. And so, just a suggestion. I'm not, you know, saying, but we're in the world today, everything's made out of, made from oil, actually. They just chemically change it, and, but it's all, and it burns like crazy. I mean, once it's lit off, you can't, water don't help, it just spreads it. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Okay.